...that bill alluded to in his IGA reports, and particularly to building permits. What we're finding is, and what they've found, and some of the concerns that I've had all along, not only during this moratorium period, but leading up to the moratorium on large space projects, multiple unit projects in particular, they've already gone through land disturbance permits, and they're going through phases of construction. And the concern is, and we're going to identify that, the county is, that's part of the meeting for next week, they're going to identify for me what projects are in that situation, and where specifically are they located, and more importantly, what phase of development are they in? Because if they're at a point, especially in the multiple unit type of development, it may be better served to allow the county to continue working with that builder, that developer, to finish that project out, instead of stopping midstream and coming into the city. That's something that we're taking a look at. We want continuity there. If that is the case, then we're going to want to enumerate that and identify that specifically in IGA. If this is a long-term project that could take 12 months or longer, well, then we're certainly going to want to have it. But if they're nearing the end, maybe there's three or four more buildings that have 20 units in each building, and they're building those along, it might make no sense that it remains in the county just to finish the project up. Then you have final plats that have been filed, where building permits now are able to be pulled. In those cases, they're going to identify those subdivisions for us, and we will take those up, because those are individual, single-family building permits, so we'll want to know where they are and the stage of that. The big question that came up that we'll resolve next week when we talk to Richard Stockner and the law office at the county is, what do we do with those projects, in particular, those houses, building permits that were issued, but the trade permits did not come in, because they got trapped with the moratorium, they couldn't come in and pull a plumbing permit or HBAC permit. So how do we handle that? Do we pick that up? Or do we allow that particular house, that particular building permit, being the umbrella permit, and the trades still pull off of that? So, you know, we're going to be splitting hairs here, but it's important, because you can't have the builder, the developer confused on where they go, and we can't have our inspectors showing that the county inspectors are there, and then we've got, not only duplicative services, but we've got disgruntled citizens in the community. So we want to have a smooth transition there, and we want to have it seamless, so we want to be able to pick it up. So that's going to be a very first task of the community development department to get through this. Same thing with public works on inspections, especially for land disturbance. You know, where are we from the standpoint of the county? Are they about to issue the LDP? Or have they, they got stopped in the moratorium, or the weather held them back? And, you know, so what do we do about those? So the 13 land disturbance permits, we'll be going through each one of those. Building permits, the county is going to filter through that very long list, and we're going to identify categories of projects. Single-family homes, that's going to be easy unless the building permit's been issued and not the trades. You know, we're just going to have to take a look at that. So that's where we are there. So what you'll probably see, and most likely see, when we get into community development and public works on those IGA's, there may be an enumeration of specific addresses or projects where we identify them and the stage of their development, specifically what the county will do to the point of what we call a clear handoff to us. And so community development will be heavily involved in that when they show up on Wednesday, as well as public works where the other permits are involved as far as improvements.
So the cases of the trade permit, the permit issued for the house, the red light?
Right.
Framing it, just the trade coming in, I mean, that basically is still that form next week?
Well, that's right, but who then takes over the inspection? That's the point. And the bill talking about, and the question that brought up the answer to the building code, in those specific instances where we will pick up a project midstream, we're going to have to have the exact same building code as the county, just for purposes of, you know, streamlining and continuity. We can't have structural drawings, especially in a commercial project, where an engineer has designed off of the building code of the county, and we might have a tweak on that, and then that creates a need for new structural drawings. And you would not want to hear that number coming to you.
Yeah, a couple more on the phasing. You know, if it truly is a phased project, there should be...
If there's a point where we can cut it off.
Yeah, you could, that, the cabinet, you mentioned this just recently, the subdivision. The cabinet's very specific. If the developer goes in and says, "I'm going to phase this," they make sure that each phase stands alone.
Correct.
They look at it, you know, it's the end of the world.
That's right.
So there should be phase, if there's a phase on, and that was just if the developer owner phasing, and that gets on, you know, they decide, you know, a couple of buildings.
Well, and there's phases within phases, especially in the multiple unit development. You're going to have a phase of land disturbance, and then the building permits coming in behind. And while those building permits are being pulled on the different buildings, they may not pull all 20 building permits for those buildings that may have 15 or 20 units in them. They may pull those within phases. But then as they get to a 50% rate of completion, or at least the framing is up, they're going to, they may pull the land disturbance permit on the next phase, and then the builder may just come in, especially if the builder and developer are one and the same. They may start pulling the building permits. But then the trades will come in after the building permits, because the plumbing is not going to be pulled at the time of the building permit. So we've got to identify those, but we need to make it clear where there can be a real clean handoff, and, you know, where we can do that in a phase that makes sense, then the rest of that project comes to the city. But I want to be sure that when we get that handoff, we have the code that can comply with the structural drawings that have been approved.
Yeah. In one final, on the permits that have been accepted, have not been reviewed or reviewed, do you have an idea what sort of number of those are, and what's being addressed to that?
That was the 30-page document that the two department heads were questioning each other on validity of it. So I was promised that I would get that next week, but you're looking at thousands.
Thousands that have been accepted.
That are in some stage or form.
Some stage of review.
Correct. And again, it could be a kitchen remodel, it could be a bathroom remodel. I mean, they permit everything. You know, homeowners permit that JD wants to remodel his own basement, he pulls the permit for that.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah, okay, so they want to go through and filter all of that for us. But that's why when Gary Cornell handed it to me, Harry was sitting there, and he said, "No, I don't think that's right," you know, because it was like, "Oh my goodness."
I had the list earlier from Harry's, and he said, "That was three or four years old."
Exactly, and that was the comment from Harry. So they're going back through, through their software that they call Hanson, to clean that up.
Marie, let me ask you, I've already had some calls on some of these big projects in my district, and these are projects that are, one's more long than the other one, but they're underway. And they are asking for a point of contact, and they want to be in the loop. What point, and who is that person that they can be talking to? Have we been resolved these issues first, and then to be handed off to Clark Patterson, or...?
Well, I think that's Clark Patterson, everyone else. Because when they report on Wednesday, I'm going to brief them on just this very same information as I'm briefing you all on. You know, I'd like to be confident of the material that I'm getting from the county. And the reason why I'm involved at this stage, and very soon Clark Patterson will be picking up, but at this stage, it's going to trigger doing something with an IGA. And I want to be sure that we don't drop a project or miss a project that should have been identified, and then later on the county discovers, say, "We did all the work, and now there needs to be compensation for that." So that's what's concerning me at this point, since catchers make the other part of the conversation too, as part of this report. I've asked also for the projects that were filed, that are part of a rezoning, the conditions, that, you know, where are we on conditions? Specifically, the motion that approved a rezoning, what conditions did it really include? Because we've had conversations about that, and so that led to discussions by the county saying, "Well, we need to check this project and this one too." So there's some others that are out there that we need to be sure of, that all the conditions or all the promises made by developers were captured in the motion's approval. And if they weren't, then it was a promise made, and it may not be a promise yet. So those we need to, in case of importance, is going to be real important here, to be sure that someone's following up on these conditions, because sometimes many conditions can have a sunset. And if they're not, you're not going to have the applicant running reminding you they're supposed to do something.
Well, to, to wrap this point, I think it is extremely important, just as we talked about communicating with people with licensing or enable for building licenses, occupational licenses, for licenses, to be proactive in getting that information, to make a promise as a city to get, to be proactive, and get letters out to these people, either posted to our website, or if it's something you can mail them, and other addresses that answer these questions, go a long way in helping.
Well, that's why these lists are so important. And some may end up being redundant, and some may be, have the need to notify, because maybe the project is... But there's no reason why we can't contact people that are on the list to say, "Welcome to the city of Brookhaven, you know, this is your community development department, and these are the numbers you need to contact, and we're looking forward to serving you and helping you through your project." Because I think there needs to be a formal introduction of some sort, that we're here now, and you've been handed off to us. So absolutely, yes. I am very anxious for Clark Patterson to show up on Wednesday morning.
So they are showing up?
Yes, and that leads me to my next report, everybody.
Yeah, we're quick on this map.
Yes.
This pre-renew, Sage, this LSP, how many, how good is this information? It's just not bad information. It's got LSPs on here, and it looks like 2012.
Yeah, this is, this is what they had, as they were showing as current. But again, there were permits in here that could have already been completed. I mean, this was something they pulled together to be able to hand to us, knowing that they still need to filter it.
I know LSPs, quotes.
Yeah, right, so again...
So we're not talking about licensing for 2013, these are all...
This is everything the county has been working on that was in what is now the city of Brookhaven. That's what they pulled for us.
We tried to build a licensed base, and the base of what was in Brookhaven as of a point in time, they pulled everything as of a point in time that they had for 2013 licenses.
Correct. So, and, you know, community development will be going through this to verify themselves. Even when we get the filtered list from the county, it's going to require boots on the ground and really looking without, for these...
To that point, though, is there a way to identify which of these licensed materials are 2013 licenses?
Yes, they should be able to provide that, just because they can have that in their database. You know, the other thing too, that will come out of this, and what my hope is, and I'm sure Chris is probably already thinking about this, is once we start, we're on the ground verifying a lot of this, my expectation is we're going to find some new businesses out there that have yet to register, because they just didn't know they needed to do that with the county. And that we'll be able to introduce ourselves and let them know that they need to be licensed in Brookhaven. So I think we'll see some added benefit to that.
Thank you, Marie. Who's next?
Next will be an update in contract awards, to give you where we are on specific contractors. I'll start with Clark Patterson, Raisins, we've been talking about them. We had a good meeting with them yesterday, conversations leading up to yesterday on what their original proposal was, and what the true startup needs are for the city. And if you'll allow me just to take a minute to describe the strategy behind the approach to coming up with the final numbers of the contract. There is, there is a need of the city for ramp-up and startup. Then there's the need for the city to sustain their levels of service, and even go beyond levels of service from the standpoint of noise planning and development. Could be additional plans and projects that the mayor council called for, comp plan, or maybe a zoning analysis, or some kind of LCI that could occur in part of the city. So looking at that, and looking at what the proposals were, or the RFPs, that the governor's commission sent out, and they did a good job, and they did a very thorough job. But what they sent out really was the city at full complement. And while that is not needed for startup, it really gives you a wonderful measuring stick on where you should be when you are at full complement, so you know what you're working towards. So with that in mind, we took that and really looked at, well, what are the real needs for startup for the first six months? The most critical need that you have is data collection, and confirming that data to be true. Also responding to citizen requests, or complaints, or needs, or concerns, and of course, building inspections. And then, of course, you've got public works, it's going to have to respond to the public improvements throughout the city, and hopefully we won't have any inclement weather that calls them out in the middle of the night. But there's a readiness factor for those departments to prepare themselves for. So we looked at that from a six-to-a-ninth-month ramp-up, and that's what we did. We looked at those contracts, we looked at what the real needs were for the city. And with that in mind, I'm very pleased to report, and I think Chris is very happy about this, just out of two contracts, we've been able to save over $1 million and change. So it's a million-plus change. In really bringing on board what the needs are for this ramp-up period, and keeping in mind that probably by the end of the summer, as you start preparing for your next year's budget with your permanent city manager, you'll be looking at what expansions you'll want. You've already got the positions identified, you've already got the costs identified, you've got the burdens identified. So all of that is there for you, and for your manager to further negotiate when the need comes to that point. So for now, the city can benefit and gain from a cost and savings to allow you to hold back those expenditures until necessary. So Clark Patterson can be able to settle $400,000 on their proposal. Lo engineers were ready with their contract, they were able to reduce theirs over 50%. Now, there are some add-ons, you know, they're purchasing trucks on the city's behalf. There's also, if you recall at the presentation on Lo, there's a laser truck that will go and identify all the improvements in the city, give an assessment, but also give you a condition of that improvement. So that is factored in, as well as an add-on cost.
You're not buying it.
No, you're not buying it, we're just renting it for its use. And just those two items alone are $105,900. But the trucks will be here, you know, full-time, all the time. And then the laser trucks will come in in February, and John Drysdale's already been able to get those scheduled, so we're very pleased about that. So with that, we've been able to have, like I said, savings of $1 million without diminishing the level of service. That's very important. I mean, you can cut costs all day long, and you're not going to get what you need, because what you need are people to come in and start working. We have that.
This is where the addition on their part, that for the first five, six months, we're going to need to have a staff.
Correct.
Bid on a full staff.
Correct, exactly. And again, you've got the full complement of staff to be able to grow into that when you need it. Your permanent city manager may find, along with discussions with those respective departments, that it might not be needed until well into year two. Or you may come up with something entirely different, and I'll give you an example. The governor's commission came up with a job description of a planner that would have responsibility for economic development. Well, that truly is a standalone department and position, because that is your business arm of the city, that's your recruiter, that's your business liaison. That's the department that works through mayor and council on creating incentives for businesses to come. You develop thresholds, you create a plan, if there's 200 employees, we're going to look at this. If it's 500 employees, we're going to look at these kinds of things, similar to what the state of Georgia does in attracting business and trade. You don't want to have that position housed in a regulatory department, because you have an incentive arm here, and a regulatory arm here. And that position should be able to have responsibility of decision, and acting on behalf of the mayor council, and an arm of your city manager, very close to the city manager in working, because your manager's going to be up too, not only recruiting business, but sustaining what's here. You know, you want to keep what's here, you don't want to lose it to another city. So those are things that, you know, could come up, that your city manager may want to take a look at some of these positions and say, "Look, I think it's best served if it's in this department." But you'll see that as you really get into the full exercise of your budget for 2013. Right now, it's setting up a budget of anticipated revenues, and looking at what is the critical need of the city, how much is that going to cost, and how can we do it? In courts, it was recommended at full complement, three staff members, and we are looking at two. In communications, there were, the governor's commission had four recommended. What was proposed was two, and we think we can do it with one. Now, as the city continues to communicate and do other things, you're going to look at that differently. But for startup, I think you're going to be well-covered with multiple diversities. So you've received an immediate savings, but you're not diminishing the levels of service. And so with that, I'm very excited. What I'm very appreciative of, and I hope you all will share this with me, is that each one of these vendors are willing to be your partner. They took some cuts, you know, it's not what they wanted, but they were willing to do that, to be able to serve the city and hope for a long-term relationship. And they all agree with me, not one of them disagreed that these positions were, you know, that they needed more than what we thought were necessary for startup. So you really have some partners here, and I commend them for that willingness to work with the city. So we're on a good track, and Mayor Davis will have those contracts ready for your signature. We'll have our line meetings with Jacob next week. Lo is in the room, and we're ready with them.
How would we know when we see detail on what some of the cuts were, or what some of the parameters are that were used to establish terms of policy? You know, you talked earlier about permits, and the number of permits around there. I mean, what standards of performance were established for permit review? A permit for two weeks, or...?
Well, we're looking at a 10-day turnaround.
I'm sorry?
We're looking at a 10-day turnaround for land disturbance permits to come in somewhere during that timeframe and less. However, there's a little caveat to that too. When you're into land disturbance permitting, we can turn them around in 10 business days, many times less than that. But then you have something that's called soil and water.
That's it.
That, until the city gets there...
Yeah, they need 40, they know, so...
Right, we've got, that's why it's critical that the city receive their own issuing authority. And Clark Patterson is working on that right now, and we need to get that, because we don't leave a slow development down. When we come to...
One big, we're just single-family building permits, I mean, we're taking six, eight weeks in the cap, and... What's our, I mean, just for our development, but what's our...
Well, I can't imagine...
What's our parameters?
Well, I can't imagine, I've seen building permits turned around in a day. I've seen them turned around in a few hours.
But if we give them specifically, I mean, you said 10 days.
Well, I, I, the land disturbance is 10 days, and that's a good figure, because you've got engineering looking at that, you've got the environmental side. On a building permit, if it's a single-family home, all you're looking at is the footprint of the dwelling and the setbacks. You know, that's what it is on a single-family. If you're looking at a commercial building, you know, then you're looking at more, because...
Can you get a email or some problem that says what we have to make more of?
Yes, I can give you all the turnaround times, all the permits, absolutely. Yeah, I can get with, we'll get that out to you sometime late next week, after I beat, after this.
You talk about ramping up, also think, any question about when are we going to start accepting and reviewing these other applications, and various applications, and those types of things? When are we going to be in a position to have those folks in place to begin accepting?
They're all showing up on Wednesday next week, and we're going to be ready the morning of the 18th. And if somebody files at 12:01 a.m. on the 18th, we receive that.
And that doesn't mean it's set in a line, but we're putting mugs online as we can, tracking projects and those types of things.
Yes, I mean, we're, right, and we're going to work through all of that, identifying the software. Clark Patterson now is working with a software company, and they told me it's similar to what they use in Dunway. But they're negotiating that right now, but yes, there will be a system that they use to track.
We can get a preview, like, yeah, before.
Yeah, I mean, we'll work on that, we'll get you that. Maybe we can at least have a report for you at your council meeting, your first council meeting in January. Can I have recalled that in the bids themselves, that there was some performance metrics that had some things like, how quickly they'll turn around a building permit, and things like that?
They were in the scope of works that the commission put out, and in the bid, they already...
Well, they're somewhere off in my books. Oh, I'll call them.
There's been a lot of people sitting on waiting.
Yes, absolutely, well, let me...
Let me ask you something, if you want to see the question. Is there, if somebody wants to pull a building permit out of the cap, and pay the fees to Brookhaven, and have them review the project, is that possible?
Say that again, if they pay their fees to Brookhaven?
If, if, if they've already applied, if they made an application for the cap, and for our building permit, how, both of them, for a second, six, eight, 10 weeks, and then it's, you know, it's worth the money, pay the fee, and they...
Well, anybody can withdraw a building permit at any time, without what you're...
And reasonably.
And they can refile, absolutely. And when they would refile that, they have to refile it to the appropriate jurisdiction, in this case, it would be Brookhaven.
I'll be giving a pretty, I'll be giving a, but in some cases, some people work, people don't, just want that guy to...
Marie, just as a point of notification, when you're talking about the dollar savings, is it based on annualized, and then yet, we're all discussing six months, and then ramping up?
I'm basing that, that was, their proposals were for one year. That was the one-year cost, and combined, it represents $1 million in savings for the year.
Yeah, but that's if we start off at a start-up level, keep that for a year.
Right.
We're also talking about maybe starting to add these six months.
That's what you said, actually.
We don't know that, that could happen, we could, right.
We're going to take it one step, though, we still have that, so I'm just...
Yeah, we could add, depending on the workload, depending on the visa, the council. If you all call for a particular project that's not covered with the current staff, then we're going to have to take a look at that. But I, I have confidence that, you know, we can sustain this.
We're here.
That, or close to it, yes. You've got some very well-groomed, experienced vendors that know how to get the job done.
Well, it's exciting, it's kind of refreshing, you know, I think all of us, we're running for office, and we're talking about the city, constantly finding ways to save costs, and that initial service over that, and... It sounds like we're on a good path in that, I'd like to make sure it works out, but feel very good about that. Appreciate your work, and everybody's working, and we're following that.
Well, the tip of the hat goes to the vendors for willing to cut into their profit and to make it work. And we work very hard on identifying those positions, and what really makes sense. You know, who's doing the work, and, you know, is it a shared position? And how do we make sure that the ultimate job gets done? So I feel very bad.
One last little question on this, you mentioned some of the purchases for some of these contracts. When we make these purchases, are we making it for the city, or are these purchases, where's the ownership of the trucks? Who got the title of the trucks?
The vendors do. The simple ones.
And so in all of our costs for services, those... And so in all of our costs for services, those, I'm just speaking frankly, I would imagine that a lot of the cost for providing services, I would talk with included the vehicles to be able to produce things or do the services.
Well, in fairness to the, the vendors, and JD, you need to correct me if I'm wrong, but I had them tell me that they understood the proposal was that the city would purchase this equipment. And so when they were told, no, we don't want to do that, which I said that, they were willing to do it. You know, there's some savings to the city on that too, with them purchasing versus, versus the city. So they were willing.
Purchase, but then we.
There would be a way to purchase that from them, you know, if, if they were no longer the contractor or the city decided they wanted to own it themselves because maybe it was more cost-effective. And that gets into, you know, finance and numbers as to what really makes sense. That's a, that, that becomes a risk decision, you know, later on. But most cities that do the startup, you know, they'll, they'll look at, you know, what the, the base prices or the Kelly Blue Book or whatever the, you know, the, the value of the.
Right.
The components.
I think that, you know, it, it does come down to financing question that I don't want to fight the man in the shield.
Right.
Calls, best regulations for doing that. I simply want to look at if we are in the fact that paying for these furniture features, equipment that we provide services, does it make sense on the financial side to have them either pay for it and build it? Or does it make more financial for, for us than to lease these things at the city? Or financially at least this apartment overall package, financial point, I mean, once I forget.
That's why I had Chris in the room.
He answered your questions all of a sudden. Sometimes nice and restive, sometimes. The, the data is issued here, the RFP, like you said, is designed for an ongoing operation. The software, for example, looking at $100,000 for implementation, setup, training, everything needs to be done with that. And they're not going to do anything related to money. So we may not have the back stipulation of until the second week of January. At that point, it's too late to start issuing permits without continuing training. Same thing with the vehicles, you know, they're going to have to get them, work them, get them stocked and equipped, et cetera. So startup definitely has to take its pound. That being said, the software in particular, the license, will still be in the city's name. We're going to, we're going to own that data, not the vendor. So at any point in time, vendors change and rotate out and a vendor comes in, the whole vendor doesn't just take their ball all over the home. The ball stays with us and we keep playing with it. So the vehicles, you know, one vendor is going to purchase them outright, pay them year one. And when we're done, the other one wants to do a lease on their vehicles and it's going to be less than $300 per vehicle, for the truck, the fuel, the equipment, everything that goes with that. That's really a preference. The biggest thing is the finances at year one. Long term, you know, we, we may find there's cases where it's better for us to buy the equipment than we may find cases where it's better than the other. IT, IT is a good example, our IT vendor sometimes get pricing for the media.
I think it's something to, to definitely weigh the pros and cons. And I simply don't want, you know, I want to make sure that we're taking into consideration that, let's say, that helps us just play that segment and we get into a contract. Then for unforeseen reasons, you just, it's not like, you know, if I said that we bought, bought, you know, X number for computers or cars or whatever, and we, in fact, don't own those and get paid for, for the hopes of a long-term contract. So I think we just want to make sure that we weigh those risks.
I just want to make one other point. I think this is a great example of demonstrate, now I want to make sure the public and the news media understands that the contract isn't finalized till we, till J-Maxx signs it. And it's still been a work in progress and a negotiation, and we just got this.
Your motion allowed, you're moving a bit emotional with the language.
Yes, exactly. So we have seen like some, in some news reports that, that reported a contract amount that was from the governor's commission, which was this like larger amount of an ongoing operation. That's not the planned cost of, of the contract. So that way, at some point, we will release those numbers and you'll see the true cost of the contracts, but it's not.
Yeah, the contracts are word-based on, when the council made their motions, the, the number of long contracts was awarded, subject to further negotiations. So you can't take any of those contract numbers from the governor's commission, that's a job we have to the contract side. We'll get the numbers, we will release them. And after it's ever signed, Valley, that will know what's expected to pay for the services. But it's a good one. Those will come back and we'll approve them and then we'll sign them.
Yes. No, excuse me, the mayor will sign them. I will send copies to you all, but it doesn't require further verification because you all approved the contracts that have been assigning task orders at last resort. Thank you.
They were, they were being negotiated. They got so. Well, the contract has the scope of work in it, right? So, so to negotiate this stuff, this tool, and it's still work. And so, you know, the contract, the scope of work was approved with subject to negotiations on price. So unless they've changed the scope of work, which I think, they've changed the work, they've changed the price, they've changed the scope of work.
Well, in some cases, we've changed the price without changing the scope of work. In other cases, the scope hasn't modified as well as the price. For example, the community development included a revision for economic development for the entire year. That's the situation where this position was pulled because we're not ready to do that at this time. And they acknowledged that, okay, we won't be fighting economic development services until we're, we're aligned.
So we pull that out and we pass it through.
That's correct. But the court, the scope of not changing it, communications, the scope of not changing it, it's clearly a possibility.
I guess before we start, since what we, what we, some of the agreement on.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely, because I'm getting all of those cleaned up sheets and lists with identifying those positions and, and the costs associated with it.
Maybe any pullouts like that could be just.
Well, the pullout, actually, it wasn't even, as I mentioned, in the governor's commission proposal or RFP, it listed it as a planner too, but the job description was for economic development purposes. So we deleted that because there was no need for, for that planner's position for that. But in my footnote to you all, at some point, I think, when you bring that position on, it needs to be mixed up in the program.
That was the one, so.
It was.
Well, public works, that's our word, we're not ready to do that.
Mr. Mayor, before you move on to the next item, I'd like to just take one minute to just make a statement. You know, everyone's been rushing around, it's been chaos and we all know this. And, you know, pulling this data from, you know, the county, we've been running back and forth. And Bill was very generous to loan his intern, Daniel Hall, to me. And I just wanted to recognize him for a minute for you all. He's a senior at Ole Miss and stays his last day because he goes back to Ole Miss to finish out his senior year. He has just been a godsend and I just.